Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, March 1st, 2024, March 11th. I saw it, you know. Please stand and join me, us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we'll move to announcements by the board.
I think, yeah, we all, most of us attended the parade on Saturday, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Some of us are still wearing green for it. Yeah, we're supporting for the holiday. And many of us attended the lunch after the march, which was hosted by the Friends of White Plains Schools, and they did a great job there. A lot of families showed up. This morning was rough for the LaTisia household. Daylight Savings was not kind to us, waking up in the dark. And then, teaching all day was definitely not easy. Kids are a little, we're the zombies after the long, the hour loss. But I think we're ready to go. That was it. It was really just the parade, I think, we all went to.
Yeah, we all had fun. And thank you for acknowledging the Friends of White Plains. They supplement, you know, our arts. And it's just amazing that, you know, sometimes, when I see them, I say, no one has better friends than us. But I really believe it. No one has a better group of dedicated people that are truly friends of our school district. And we thank them for all that they do. The other thing I'll mention is Dr. Ricker and I participated in a web, a web meeting with Shelley Mayer, right? Really to advocate for what we need in terms of support, financial support, you know, from the state so that we have our programs intact and that we meet the needs of all our students. So Dr. Ricker did speak, and although I was at work, you know, I was able to be there in presence, you know, in my presence to support Dr. Ricker, who, you know, addressed Shelley Mayer on our behalf, and was really thankful for that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll mention a few things. So the Science Department presented some Zoom meetings on the new changes in the science curriculum for eighth grade. So I was able to zoom into most of those. Eastview Middle School presented several information sessions for fifth-grade parents who are moving up into sixth grade. And they went to each of the elementary schools. So I attended one of those sessions as well. It was very spirited and informative. And then they had a curriculum night as well at Eastview, where they talked about the sixth-grade curriculum, really well-attended. Keenan Bean did a budget Zoom on the annual budget vote basics.
Yeah, I was trying to think of that.
Right, right. And I do want to welcome, actually, you'll hear from our BOCs, Southern Westchester BOCs, my colleagues here, administrative team, and some of our board members are here. So I welcome you. And I should mention that one of the many benefits, as you'll hear about BOCs, is that we had asked Keenan Bean to do some of these sessions and webinars. So that's one of the benefits. Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association did a session on understanding state aid that I attended. And just this morning, sort of, I think, hot off the press, the New York State Association of Small City School Districts did a session on the annual state budget, and Shelley Mayer presented this morning. So I just wanted to mention some of the highlights. I haven't seen the news, but they were expecting to present the One House budgets today. I don't know if they actually came out or not with the Thursday vote. That was the timing she talked about. And that they really are looking at a full rejection of the governor's proposed budget cuts, restoring safe harmless plus, you know, 3%, correcting the inflationary factor, back to the February database, re-asking for a million-dollar foundation formula study to be done by SED that had been requested last year and was not in the governor's budget and didn't make it to the final budget, expanding universal pre-K. So more to come as we see how that all plays out. I think there's an expectation that that state budget is not going to be on time this year. And then the last thing I'll just mention is the New York State School Boards Association had a Board of Directors meeting up in Albany this past weekend. And I apologize, some of my BOCs people will hear this, some of this at our next meeting when I report out. But we also spent a lot of time talking about foundation aid as well. And the New York State School Boards Association, NISPA, is really advocating as well to restore foundation aid. The COLSPA, which are the county school boards associations, have agreements with the New York State School Boards Association. So that affects our Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association. So those are up for renewal. You have all received, I think, emails about a resolution survey that went out. And we have our NISPA annual conference in New York City this year in October. So, thank you.
Joe, we have a, some, we're local this year. It's down here instead of upstate. So we're trying to get a few presentations down there. So we have some submissions, I think.
Yeah.
So if we have any pull-up in NISPA, it'd be great to, you know.
Yeah, we do. We have a submission in, and I think we know people.
I didn't know whether I could share that or not, so, yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
Any, anything else? I know we have some exciting, we have some plays coming up. And so just a lot of exciting, a lot of exciting things. So next, we'll move right into the Superintendents Report.
Thanks, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's great to, it's great to see everybody here. And we do, and again, welcome to our colleagues from BOCs. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to ask if you will bear with us for one second. I would like to invite our student liaison to provide her update first. And that way, if she needs to head home to do some homework, she can, she can do that. There we go.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well, especially after we lost that hour. I will be starting with Post Road tonight. Mrs. Sorio told me about the Kindness Week, where the first graders won the kind, oh, sorry, the kindergartners won the Kindness Champion Belt for having the most acts of kindness and brought the most donations to the Post Road market. The kindergartners are not the only ones in the achievement. Amelia Bushwald, Noah Kirkland, Haley McKenzie, and Tyler Morris of Post Road placed second in their respective categories at the Greenwich Country Day School Classic Chess Tournament. The students are also beginning their One School One book with a book called "A Boy Called Bat" by Elena K. Arnold. And finally, they will be holding their annual STEM fair soon. Special thanks to the PTA for helping the children with their projects and presentations. For Ridgeway, they would like to thank Friends of White Plains Public Schools for their generosity and support to bring the Beyond Broadway program to Ridgeway, which let the students perform Broadway shows like Hamilton, Cats, and Aladdin for their friends and family. Backyard sports has also been a big influence on the students, allowing them to participate in basketball and learn about teamwork. The PTA also helped in aiding the launch of RidgeRaid's Read-A-Thon with different activities along the way. MIS had a busy month. They hosted their first MIS, na, na, sorry, their first MIS Nation Global Gathering. This was a huge success as the families received boarding passes, went through TSA, and got to meet a real pilot in MIS Dad. Different tables had different countries set up for all students to learn about, to learn about the cultures, as well as Papa performances from the White Plains High School mariachi band, salsa, Irish step, and tango, and Bollywood dancers. They then ended Black History Month with a laser light show that showcased African-Americans who have contributed to our world sponsored by Friends of White Plains. And while the rain may have got the rest of us down, it did not stop the White Plains St. Patrick's Day Parade with a great turnout from MIS. For the high school athletics, the springtime sports will be starting soon with tennis and golf tryouts. Last, but certainly not least, students at Eastview have been learning about the scientific approach to questions with a hands-on approach that fosters curiosity and critical thinking as well as talking about challenges they may face. The students at Eastview also engage in a code of conduct meeting about embracing the differences between students in order to make sure everyone feels heard and valued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, without further ado, I'd like to welcome Dr. Hal Coles and the team from Southern Westchester BOCs. I think you have a presentation as well, Dr. Coles?
Yes.
Okay.
So I want to thank you on behalf of the, our Southern Westchester BOCs Board of Education and our executive team. I want to thank President Eller and Dr. Ricker for inviting us to come and speak to you on behalf of our BOCs. It's a great opportunity for us to share with you the good work that your students are providing in the work that we're doing at our BOCs in our CTE and the special education program. And I want to formally introduce you, invite you to our April 3rd annual meeting at 6:30. And we'll send something out formally to you, but I just want to verbally say that. And also invite you to come as a board to our BOC CTE program and actually see your students in action and see the good work that they're doing. So I want to talk to you about our mission, vision, and values of our BOCs. Our mission. Oh, okay. Thanks. Our mission is, our job at BOCs is to support the learning in the school community and actually support the learning in our, in our region, BOCs region. And our vision, that we're committed as leaders to be responsive and collaborative and helpful in the work that we're doing at our BOCs. And we're seeking excellence in endeavoring high-quality services and support that we value and that are intricately part of the work that you're doing here in your region. Our values, we demonstrate two values of trust, respect, collaboration. And we're committed to create a nurturing and growing environment with the students that we're working with. Our goal, our commitment is to be, to develop goals and address gaps that we see in our mission, vision, value, but in supporting our component districts here in our BOCs region. And we want to become true partners in the work that we're doing to help with developing a roadmap based upon the needs in our region, based upon the needs in your school district, to be able to help develop the guidance us in what we're doing, what we're focusing on. So what is BOCs? BOCs were established in 1948, and they were legislatively created to support the regional sport and school districts. And if you think about a BOCs, if you think back to what was being done at that time period, if you had a student, for example, needing a special class for student, and you only had two students, hardly does not enough feel to have a special class for that one student or those two students. But if you look at combining with other students in other school districts coming together, that was how the BOCs formula was started, to create a collaboration, the work that we're doing, so it made it cost-effective and efficient for school districts within the region. Right now, there are 37 BOCs in New York State. And this past year, we're celebrating our 75th anniversary of being an organization here in New York State. Out of the 37 BOCs, there's 12 different regions, and we're part of the Laura Hudson region. And those are made up of joint-management training meetings with their, actually, JMTs. And within each JMT, there's a Laura Hudson Regional, there's a Regional Information Center. And our Regional Information Center is Laura Hudson Regional Information Center. You'll be hearing from Dr. McDonald later tonight to hear about the regional information work that's being done. As a BOCs, our job is to support within our region. And I think that part of the, the 25% of the responsibility of the job of the district superintendent is we are a liaison with the Commissioner of Education. Once a month, if there's a region's meeting, sometimes twice a month, we're in Albany, working with the Commissioner, taking back issues and concerns from the local region back to the Commissioner related to educational development, issues, concerns, and guidance, questions that are being brought up. Also liaison with anything that comes up here. If there's a question about, you're working on finance, if you're looking at, trying to look at putting together a building project, working with the Education Department to help push that through so that you wind up advancing with the work that you're being done. My work as a liaison works with me, with the Commissioner of Education directly, and the Education Team, also working closely with the Board of Regents with issues related to the work that's being done here in our region. One of the things, there are two of the superintendent's responsibilities, just superintendent's responsibility. One is doing, supporting superintendent searches within school districts, and also help with board development as it begins to board, as work that's being done. So that's part of the work that we do. It's part of your administrative budget that we pay for, the services you get. So those things are part of the work that we do. And we're currently in the process of doing one search here in the region, where we are available to do searches throughout the time period if you would ever need one. And we're also here to help with any kind of board development you might need as far as cost-effective way to do that, so. Along with that, we also provide consulting services and actually so you can read up here what other things we're actually doing. But I think that the most important thing, we're here to support you in the work that you're doing. And I like, I thank you for the opportunity for us to come up and talk with you about the work we're doing. And now you're going to hear from several of my colleagues and part of our executive team to talk about the different divisions that they're working with. First person up is James Grotto Jr. He's our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services.
So I, I work with, directly with the student programs. So I get the privilege of talking to you about student programs, which would be of great interest to you. So the first one, you may have a lot of familiarity with this already, but CTE, Career Services. So this is an interesting slide where they bounce in, but just the high points, sometimes that's more distracting or more attention-getting. But either way, CTE, the snapshot of what is CTE? So it's for high school juniors and seniors. They come to us either in AM session or PM session. You have a data sheet in your folder telling you that you send 83, 82 students this year. So that's a combination of juniors and seniors. They can take anything from pre-engineering to animal science, to automotive, to culinary, to many other things. We have 17 programs, and this is kind of what you need to know, what's helpful to know. But you may also be wondering about outcomes. What do we get for it? What do our students get for leaving their high school? Right, leaving their high school as a junior, coming to BOCs for a half-day, for two years, what do they get for it? Because sometimes it's a big ask to leave your high school. It takes a little courage. They get a lot. They get an opportunity to earn eight credits, CTE credits, English, math, and/or science credits. They get a lot of support. If they happen to be a student who's a special needs student, they can still come. They also get a work-based learning opportunity throughout their program. Work-based learning has really been a focus of our programs to give kids opportunities to get out in the field. They also get queued up for summer jobs between junior and senior year. So all of our teachers are industry teachers. They didn't come through a traditional education path. They all have background in that field or they wouldn't be able to be teaching it. So they have tremendous connections. Right now, all the culinary students, if they want summer jobs in a catering position or any type of food service, they can get it. So they get that opportunity. And of course, the soft skills, we can't really find aid on it, but all the new friends they make, all the skills that they learn about working with kids from other districts, learning from all different people. So CTE, very, very great outcomes. They get opportunities to participate in statewide competitions. In fact, last year, we sent six students to Texas because they won, they placed so high in the state. So lots of opportunities at CTE. And just checking to see if I'm missing anything here. Regular Ed, Special Ed, it's, it's really, it's a happening place. And as Dr. Coles said, if you ever would like to come, just reach out. You can reach out directly to me or through our board clerk, and your board clerk. We have lots of districts that send board members, parents, school counselors. Your school counselors are at our campus all the time. Our school counselors are here. So it's a very good partnership in terms of CTE. So moving along, oops, I forgot one. Oops, sorry. National Industry Exams, yes. And they do get the technical endorsement. Special education. So we have a pretty extensive special education program as well. You send 11 students this year. That program supports students of all sorts of disabilities, from really multiply-disabled students to students who are on a region's track, three through eight, taking all the state tests and going, go ahead and get their high school diplomas, region's diplomas. So we support them at our main campus in North White Plains, Ry Lake, but we also have different sites around the county. We have one right down the road here, St. Matthew's School, a community-based program. St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, right on Mamaroneck Avenue. We have been renting the school behind that church for years. Those kids get opportunities to go and work in the community. Before the Galleria closed, we had kids in all those stores in the mornings, sorting things out. So lots happening with our special services program. You do have one student in our IDT, Intensive Day Treatment Program. That's a temporary program where kids would come for 30, 60, or 90 days to get some, some high level of support academically and socially, emotionally, and then go back to their district. So special education, we just finished our draft day. So we'll, we'll be working with your PPS directors and principals and school psychologists and social workers, who's going to come back to your district? Who's ready to come back? Because that's the whole point of it, is to try to get them to come back to your home district. And another, oh, wait a minute, there we go. Who put it? I gotta, gotta get ahead of this. This has changed since the last time. Look at that. There it is. So adult ed. We also offer an extensive adult education program. Again, the numbers are in your packet. It says that we serve 848 students. I'm going to just go through, put it all up here, all right? Because again, a strong and long-term partnership with the White Plains City School District. Oops, back one. So we run programs at the Rochambeau School, which we share with you, you share with us, I should say. Beautiful facility, as you know. But if you ever happen to get a chance to walk through that program when the adult ed programs are going on, it's worth the walk. It's worth the visit because you can feel the appreciation, the gratitude that those programs offer opportunities for people who are new to this country to start to learn English, to start preparing for citizenship, to start working towards their high school diploma, GED, and then right into our workforce development courses. So there's a pathway. So people who are new to this country can, if they can take advantage of these classes, they can really get on the path. In fact, we just hired two people from the adult ed program, one from Japan, one from France and Morocco, came through our adult ed program, now are working for us as teacher aides. So they came from some other career path, but here they are in this country, and there's an opportunity for them to, to get jobs fairly quickly. So that's it, in a nutshell. The incarcerated youth program at the bottom here, we do run the education program for students who are incarcerated at the Westchester County Jail. Ages 16 to 18, because the legislation has changed. 19 and above, they're not, they're not in our youth. But we do offer adult ed programs there as well, in the county jail. So students who are more than 21 can take advantage of English language learning as well. All right? Okay, thank you. Dr. Lyons is next.
So the Center for Interscholastic Athletics, Southern Westchester BOCs is the home of Section 1 and the Center for Interscholastic Athletics. We have our offices at 450 Mamaroneck Avenue. As you can see here, we serve 77 high schools and 65 middle schools in multiple counties. So it's a pretty big operation. Some of the things that our athletics department handles, the scheduling of interscholastic athletic contests. If you take the number of schools times the number of teams, if you look on your, your single sheet, you actually have the number of teams that you have just here in White Plains alone, modified JV varsity. And you multiply that out across contests. We're talking about literally hundreds, sometimes thousands, of contests over the course of time and across multiple counties. In addition to scheduling those contests, we coordinate all the assigning of the officials. So again, multiply that out, usually two officials at a basketball game across X number of schools, X number of contests. All of that is handled through our Section 1 offices. So quite, again, quite a large operation. We also handle the contracts for Section 1 certified officials. So we manage that as well as their payment. So a lot, a lot goes behind the scenes with scheduling, officials, et cetera. We also offer some optional services. For example, athletic software. So if you're a parent or if you're familiar with the athletics process, sports registration and medical clearance, very complicated. There's many online options now, so we help to facilitate that. Those contracts with vendors, with districts, video analysis such as Huddle, concussion management programs. And then we also serve as the representative of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. And as, as Section 1, as the Section 1 representative, we coordinate 36 Section 1 championship events and making sure essentially that all of our schools, all of our component schools, our members are adhering to all the rules, many rules, regulations, and bylaws that, that govern high school athletics. And lastly, and certainly not least, we talk about working with students and making sure that our student athletes are having a positive experience and are, have opportunities for leadership, not just on the court or on the field, or in the pool, but also outside in the classroom and in our schools. And also making sure that we provide an equitable and safe competition environment for all of our students in public, private, and parochial schools. Just a point of note that Section 1 does include, other than public schools, they do include private and parochial schools members as well. So that is the Center for Interscholastic Athletics. And due to a slight shuffle in the slides, I'm going to introduce Dr. Ellen McDonald, and I'll be back. As a matter of fact, I'm going to stand here.
Good evening. I'm going to take you on a little journey through our partnership in technology. And we use the slides with every school district and highlight the things that we are partners on for two reasons. One, how impressive is all that yellow? And it's only the first slide. And two, so you can see what the other options are, right? Well, what do we engage in as a Regional Information Center in the three counties of Putnam, Westchester, and Rockland and beyond? If, if the RICs don't support something that we do, we do cross-contract as well. But we have been longstanding and excellently thrilled to be partners of yours. So our first slide is about security, which is currently and has been for a while the foundation of any technology relationship for a district to ensure that everything for you is secure. So you are a part of our Data Privacy and Security Service. That is a statewide service that we, in our, take a leadership role in that does all the things ed law 2D and beyond, if that's a phrase that means anything to all of you, making sure that we are aware of how to prevent cybersecurity incidents and what do we do when they happen, right? So partnering on writing your incident response plans and making sure that you're ready and that we are there as your partner. Couple times a year, we send out to our administrators a reminder, one pager that we hope is posted in every administrator's office of, because you never remember where the binder is. You never, oh, what do I do? I got that, got that terrible phone call. Boom, look at the wall. And who are you going to call? Probably me and someone, someone in our office. So we do all sorts of technical security for those of you who like to read what's going on in that frame. You are involved in, in all of that. We do your server hosting and things like that. So, so we are protecting your networks in partnership with you. Don't know why the data security flies in. Have no idea. Okay. So in terms of that security, we, in terms of that support, I should say, we provide direct support for your network and onsite in two different ways. You are part of our Managed IT Support Service, which means that you have technicians in, in your district that come there, your break-fix fabulous people who, when you don't know why something's not working, right, will show up in your office. Some of those can be district employees, some can be ours. There's different combinations for different districts as to how many of our employees you have onsite. And then you have a whole set of expertise set of expertise in what we call vertical teams, that are back at four fifty Merrinack Ave, that have that higher level expertise, and they're specialized. So, when something is beyond a break fix moment, there is a whole team that supports you off-site with a much higher level skill set, and specialized to support you. You do have the ability to procure hardware and software through us, that is state-able, so that is a significant savings, different dollars, right? It's all money, but different dollars, and we do like to spend other people's money whenever we can before we spend our own. It's a good motto to have. And so, you also get your multi-function devices, your big copier printer, right, multi, those, you subscribe to that service as well. The only thing that's not highlighted is because you had to make a choice about your phone system. So, you're currently in an on-premise, voice over IP is what VoIP stands for, and that can be a conversation as to whether you're gonna go more towards a cloud-based, or what we currently have is hybrid, but cloud-based is on the way. You do some of your physical security through us, that's door locks, you know, lockdown systems, things like that. And you do subscribe to our hardware repair, so when things break, our team comes, they show up, we pick them up, we fix them, right, we bring them back. And as I said, we do host your servers, which you don't have just one set. We have a set at four fifty Merrinack Ave, a complete failover backup in Rockland, completely separate lines. So, if one fails, you just roll to the other. And you have the backups. Oh, and look, we get to fly in the top-left word on each slide. Let's see if that happens on the next one. Shall we dere-click? Let's do it. Yes, it does. Okay. So, in financial and student systems, so you are an Infinite Campus Student Information Systems School District. Just so you know, these are the other four that we also support. You happen to use K-12 Alerts as a messaging system. We do support four other ones, so if you ever wanted to have conversations about options that we support, that's the current landscape. I say that because one of the things that I am so proud of about the Lyric is, where two will gather, we will join you, right? So, if you and another district say, hey, we'd like to explore something else, right, it has to be a shared service, that's what BOCES Cooperative is. But if we get buzzed from a district that they want to try something new, then our account managers start talking to districts, hey, anybody else want to explore this? Should we investigate another option for our districts? So, those are the things that are up there. You do subscribe to the frontline suite of options. You do School Dude, you have the Master Library, and over, and your financial, your Envision servers are with us. We support your financial system as well, and some of your data understanding with Forecast Five. So, data services, here's where there's something that you have no choice about in the middle. The one thing you must go through your RIC with is sending your data to the state. We have the direct tunnel, you know, from our servers to the state. So, your basic state reporting is what we will always do with you, but you also subscribe to more data analysis and teacher-level reporting that is optional in there. And we do scan and score your tests for you. I guess that's the last number of count, is how many we did last year. You currently do not subscribe to our CIO support. I don't know if all of you on the board are aware of this, but your new CIO is our former coordinator. So, we have lost an excellent staff member to you, and we are thrilled, both for you and for him. And so, that I know is a new role for him. So, if you want to talk about that partnership and how to support him with that kind of support, there's two different levels. One is more of a guide and show you how to do it, and the other level of support is that we actually do the work and have your employee certify that it is correct for reporting. So, if you want to talk about that for him, we certainly can. And I forgot, yeah, there's that spinny word. All right. So, our last piece of what we focus on at the Lyric is your instructional technology. How do you use all this stuff, right, that you bought, and what is the point of all this in terms of improving student outcomes, changing the student experience in a positive and impactful way, so they're ready for the world that is already here, and the world we don't even know that they're going into? So, you do participate in a lot of our professional development. We have some threads we call PD Your Way, some of it self-paced, some of it's in-person. We really try to create a lot of different options for you. You do have some of our instructional coaches that come onsite or directly with your teachers and administrators. You purchase some of our over one hundred and fifteen software titles that are on our list and counting. And for each of those, we are not a reseller of software, so what that means is whichever of those one fifteen, I did not bring the number, I don't think you have it, we also provide the support for it, because, again, we're not Best Buy, right? We are a support and a service organization, so if you buy them through us, it also comes with professional learning, and how we do that. And it looks like instructional coaches is on here twice, so there we go. And your instructional, instructional technology plans are three-year plans that each district has to write. Welcome to the writing year is coming up, we're going into year three of the current plan. So, I have seen a draft of what the ask will be, and given some feedback to State Ed, and hopefully within the month, you should be getting the, here's what the set of questions is gonna be for the next plan. We do review them all. It is a charge that State Ed has given the RICs, so we review every instructional technology plan before it goes to the state, in the hopes that we all get it right, and we don't get it back and have to fix it. So, I will beg of you that when those deadlines come out, that our RIC deadlines, please stick to them, so we have a shot of getting them all to the state on time. Technology Leadership Institute, you are members of, which means to each of our large events, you can send up to eight employees. So, we just released our winners of our Technology Leadership and Learning Awards, the TEL Awards. You do have a winner, and that is Rocco from here in White Plains. I can release that. So, he will be honored in April for his excellent work. And then we have our Tech Expo, which is our premier huge event in May. And I'll say this as many times as I can, between now and May, it is not at Edith Macy, it is at the IBM Center in Armonk, because we don't fit at Edith Macy anymore. We have over three hundred people, and they can't accommodate that size. So, we're moving to a new location. Phew. That was the RIC on speed track, right? I'm gonna hand it back to Dr. Lyons for our communications. Want me to click, let's see what happens?
Sure, why not?
Oh, it's the bouncy in one. You got the bouncy one.
Outstanding.
I don't know how many there are, though. Do I keep bouncing?
Yeah, go for it.
We're taking a chance. I think that's good. All right, I'll walk away.
Rudely, I forgot to formally introduce myself. Brendan Lyons, I'm the Deputy Superintendent and Chief Operating Officer. And essentially, I oversee all the day-to-day operations at BOCES. So, I apologize for not introducing myself, but I'm back. So, school communications, one of our services that we offer is our school communication service. And as noted, we have public relations specialists that can be dedicated to your district. They can be, you know, in-house partially, or they can be back at our offices. We have a whole different array of level of services that you can, that you can request. Website and social media management, again, emergency land and crisis communication, all of these services are available through our school communications service. Moving into our leadership curriculum and instructions, our Professional Learning and Curriculum Support Center, sort of the gamut of professional learning opportunities, from more informal, quick, can be asynchronous, can be literally fifteen-to-twenty-minute video clips, snippets, all the way over to here, which is our most intensive support, which would be an ongoing school-district partnership, where you may have folks in-house, you may have in-person professional learning opportunities, and everything in between on any number of topics. This often comes up when districts need support around state education initiatives. They will reach out to our BOCES and say, hey, we need help on this, that, or the other thing. And we can provide, again, in-house support, you know, in-person support, or we can have folks come over to four fifty Merrinack and attend sessions, you know, workshops, et cetera. It's a very busy place. If you've ever been to this center, there are constantly folks coming in and out, taking professional learning opportunities. So, and we're very proud of all the variety of offerings that we're able to provide. Just a little more underneath the Professional Learning and Curriculum Support Center, we have what's called the Hudson Valley Arbourn, which essentially is support for our English language learners. This is a grants-based program that is housed within Southern Westchester BOCES. We're very proud to have them. They've been there, I believe, for nine years. And essentially, what they do is they support a vast region, essentially, all the way up into the Catskill, Sullivan County, over to Rockland County, Orange County, et cetera, really all the way up to Hudson Valley, in terms of supporting our English language learners. And they provide, again, visits out to school districts to provide professional learning. Some folks come to us. They do a tremendous amount of work on a pretty tight budget and a pretty small staff. They are covering a vast region, but they do an outstanding job. And again, not to read every bullet, but essentially, work with districts to provide the appropriate support for your English language learners, and to advise and to guide on best ways to do that. Also, we have our school safety and facilities area, under, again, under the same center. We provide health and safety, facilities and building-related training, school safety, emergency response, mental health and wellness. So, and then sort of the nuts and bolts, right, that we don't often think about, but have to be done in terms of school districts with all the various buildings and facilities you have, fire inspections, lead testing, et cetera. We provide support in those areas as well. We also house the local school library system, also primarily grant-funded. So, we are a regional hub for school library systems, and it's all of the behind-the-scenes support in terms of software to run libraries, but also in terms of streaming services, arts and education, automation, databases. Libraries are becoming more and more automated. So, although there are still hard copy texts and books, there's a lot of automation that goes on behind the scenes. Again, professional development for librarians, library media specialists, helping to align curriculum in New York State, and again, many workshops, networking. We offer regular meetings for library media specialists to come and get together and collaborate. So, again, another area that's housed within our BOCES. So, it is my pleasure to bring up our closer, Mr. Stephen Tibbetts, who's the money guy, which is what you've all been waiting for. And he's gonna talk a little more about other services that we offer, and also walk you through a couple of your handouts on the financial side. So, Mr. Tibbetts, it's all yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. Just to touch upon some of the other services that your district necessarily doesn't purchase, but they are available, our vehicle regional maintenance. So, we have a few districts in the region that still have their own bus fleets, so we maintain those bus fleets and do the DOT inspections, as well as other vehicles that the district owns, primarily O and M area. So, we have a garage in North White Plains where we do that, those services. We also offer cooperative bidding and piggyback purchasing. So, I saw later on your agenda this evening is participation in the twenty-four, twenty-five bids that we do cooperatively. Those range from school supplies, bakery goods, cafeteria food supplies, custodial equipment, inkjet toners, things like that. So, primarily consumable items that we do cooperatively, that districts in the region could participate in, and hopefully with the volume that we purchase, we achieve greater pricing than if you went out on your own. Also helps your purchasing group as well, from a bidding perspective. You're also, as a member of a BOCES, allowed to purchase what we call cross-contract. So, that is services that are provided by the other thirty-six BOCES throughout New York State, so not through us, but some of the other ones. You might belong to the Area One Policy Service. There's a State Aid Planning Service out of Capital Region BOCES. You send some students over to Rockland BOCES and Putnam Northern for special education services. So, those are what all we call cross-contract services. So, by being a component of a BOCES, it allows you access to all of those other services from a statewide basis. In your folder are just a couple documents on the right side. One is, there's a lot of numbers, and some of them are small, because you buy a lot of services, which is great. But the first one that looks like this, the portrait sheet, that is just an approximation of aid that, BOCES aid that's generated on services. So, any services that, primarily any services that the district purchases that is not special ed or transportation-related, they're BOCES-aided, one of the aid categories provided by New York State currently. So, you can just see an approximation of the percentage of aid generated on the services that the district purchases. In addition, there's another sheet, a landscape sheet, which illustrates the five-year history of purchases. So, you can see with the COVID years in there, there's a little bit of fluctuation that's happened, but the district certainly is one of our larger participants in our services offered through Southern Westchester BOCES. So, you can see that the, shows the White Plains purchases, and then all of the customers and the percentage participation that White Plains is of those general categories of services. So, really appreciate all of your business, all the students you send us, as well as all the other services that you purchase. So, if there are any questions for the team, I'll try to facilitate the questions, and everybody else can jump in as well. So, thank you.
So, I just had a quick question, more of a statement. I appreciate, thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing all the services that you provide to our district. Mine was about the career services and technical services in education. I know, I saw the numbers, we currently have eighty-two students attending. We have about twenty-seven hundred at the high school. And I know, the days of everybody goes to college, you know, the pendulum has swung really hard to the other side now, where kids of those twenty-seven hundred kids really want other options, as opposed to some of those advanced courses. So, I know, we get a lot of questions from parents about building a robust CT program here in White Plains, and just hearing what you offer, just to the eighty-two students currently, I think it's exciting for me to know we have a partner that we can rely on, as we try to establish a program here where we can open it to more students that would be eligible for this program. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No? Great. Well, thank you again for the opportunity. Our team really appreciates the opportunity to come out and speak with you this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Lyons.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, we're just gonna make a slight, we're gonna make a slight change in our agenda and just go to public participation at this time. So, if we have any public participation tonight, we would ask that you come and step up to the podium and provide your name and address, and we will entertain comments from the public on any issue, with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes. Please protect the privacy of your student, if appropriate, and know that the staff, all the administration would be happy to meet with you and discuss those matters privately. Do we have any public participation tonight? Thank you. Please step up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dr. Naima Smith, address twenty-five Lake Street, White Plains, New York. Good evening, Dr. Rickert, President Eller, and trustees. I am, as I stated, and Dr. Naima Smith, I stand before you as a proud parent of a White Plains High School student, and he participates in a special education program. There are some parental concerns regarding safety, a safety plan for all children when their rights have been violated, accountability regarding systematic programs, and operational concerns, and frustration with some members of administration regarding resolution and communication, or lack thereof. There are a group of parents that are willing to sit at the table to discuss our concerns collectively, individually, to come up with a resolution other than what we have already been given thus far. Most recently, and last minute, we were told of the cancellation of the Special Olympics program at twelve noon today, with a practice that was supposed to start tomorrow. We have children that are excited about this program, and now I have to go home to my son and tell him and explain to him that the program is canceled for the entire season. Personally, my son has been hit in the face numerous times by the same student in elementary school, and now in high school. An iPad has been thrown at his head. And lastly, the parent of this child approached my son unsupervised in the halls of White Plains High School. Formal complaints have been written, all to be told that the investigation is not founded. I'm frustrated. So, I'm willing to sit at the table, I'm willing to talk, and come to a resolution, because what I have is not acceptable. Thank you for listening. Thank you for having me here, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lyons. And I would be absolutely happy to connect with you at any time that's convenient for you.
Hi there, I'm gonna be real quick. My name is Mary Ann Beckettall. Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Cheryl. I actually live in Pelham, New York, so I'm here regarding the Westchester program that we'd like to invite the White Plains High School students to participate in. I'm representing the Brady Center for Gun Violence Prevention. Many of you have heard of Jim Brady and Sarah Brady and the Brady Background Check. Well, that organization is stronger than ever, and I'm one of the co-leaders of the Westchester chapter. One of the initiatives amongst many that Brady does is trying to activate today's youth in education and activation around gun safety. It's a bipartisan, not-for-profit organization, and through youth organizations like high school clubs or community clubs led by youth, we're hoping to end the senseless gun violence in America and breed a new generation of kids who are living it every day. generation of kids who are living it every day, and get them to have an opportunity to voice their concerns, learn more, and educate and activate in their communities. So, I'm here tonight with hopes that there's someone here who knows of a sophomore or a junior who might be interested in starting a gun violence prevention club at White Plains High School. The Brady National Team is outstanding at helping these students get started. I know when my daughter was a junior, she was looking for things to put on her college applications, leadership positions, community involvement. And actually, this is one of the things that she took on in Pelham. I think a lot of sophomores and juniors are often looking for new clubs they can bring to the school and looking for ways to express their interests and bring their communities together. So if you know of anyone who's interested, I'm your gal. I'm going to leave these on the chair that I'm sitting in. If you want to bring it home to your kids or to your friends' kids, I'd appreciate it. My information, my email address is right on here, and I'd love to hear from any students who might want to activate in White Plains. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Feel free to leave them on the table, too, if that's easier.
Oh, right there?
Yeah, with the agendas and everything else. Thank you.
So next, we'll move right to the superintendent's report, our preliminary budget.
Thank you very much. And I'll only take a second before Dr. Vakarotai and I talk about the preliminary budget. But I do want to wish all those who are celebrating a very happy holiday. It is the first day of Ramadan. Also, I want to thank again, as always, our student liaisons. Spring sports kicked off today, so here we go, and looking forward to that. It is also the week that we celebrate the four-year anniversary of COVID-19. And as you all know, we continue to work through challenges associated with that period of time that we've seen impact our children and community members, frankly, you know. So we are happy to be able to be in a position where we can continue to provide support because it's needed. And we'll continue to do that for as long as we need to. Also, additional recommended changes with regard to how folks are to address illness came down from CDC last week, then were adopted by the New York State Department of Health. Now, the period of time following the symptoms subsiding, you no longer need to, or it's no longer recommended that you quarantine for the additional five days. And so, all that information is good, good information in that we are now treating COVID-19, and particularly after you no longer have symptoms like other respiratory illnesses such as influenza. So all those, all that information has also been communicated. Again, recommendations. Thanks again for everyone's participation in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It was really great to see all of our children, whether they were participating in the parade or whether they were on the sidelines, the sides of the street, enjoying and cheering everybody on. It was really great. And also to the friends for the fundraising efforts following the parade and everything that they do for our children all year long. We sprang ahead, as Dr. Lattisia pointed out last night. Looking forward to Pi Day and then the first day of spring, which will be on the 19th. We have performances of Matilda Jr., which will be taking place this week. Spring recess coming up in, just in a couple of weeks. And then, of course, I'm going to be talking about this, this evening, the upcoming budget vote, which will take place on May 21st this year. And there's also a change on the agenda this evening that I think is important to point out. Unfortunately, for reasons that the school district does not have any control over, we no longer have access to the community room that was used as a polling location. Unfortunately, we were, we were very lucky to have access to it last year.
It was Battle Hill?
That's right. And, and so that, that community room in Battle Hill is no longer available to be used as a polling space. And so, we are looking to move that, the polling that took place there to Rochambeau. And hopefully, that will be as convenient as possible for our community members. And we know that that's a, that's an impact and a change, and we're sorry for that. But we tried everything we possibly could, but we were unable to continue with that relationship to utilize the Battle Hill community room.
Is there a firehouse or anything?
Nope. No, no. We looked, we looked at all different types of configurations. Yeah, unfortunately, no. Okay. Dr. Vakarotai, you ready?
Ready.
Squeaky shoes. So, just about a 90-minute presentation. Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. The good news, really, the good news is that this presentation comes in chunks. And we've been talking a lot about the proposed budget all year long. So this evening, we kind of bring everything together. But for folks who are interested in following through the history of the development of, of the strategic plan and the long-range plan, instructional component of the budget, the non-instructional component of the budget, all that information is available on the district's website under the All About the Budget section, where you can dig into all the data associated with the proposed budget, as well as all of the work leading up to tonight. And of course, I want to thank, as always, the finance, the audit committee for all the many hours of time that, that goes into reviewing everything throughout the process. So I'd like to thank the Board of Education as well for all the many hours of time that go into reviewing all of the work leading up to this evening. And, of course, I'd like to thank Ann and the entire team throughout the district for all of their help in getting us to where we are right now. So what I'm going to do is kind of move us through these slides. Again, I'm not going to read the slides to you. Many of the slides are slides that appeared in previous presentations. And you always have access to, to all this information on the website, and you always have access to us. If you have any questions about anything at all, you can reach out anytime. We'd be happy to, to connect with any community member. You can also email us at budget@wpcsd.us, and that, that comes right to Ann and me. So, so we'll be able to get back to you and answer any questions you might have. Yeah. So again, I kind of walked us through this already, the cycle of planning. What are, what are we looking at when we come to, to our proposed budget? And the answer is everything. We begin with the goals, the mission, vision, values, and goals of the school district, the strategic vision for where we'd like to see our academic program and extracurricular opportunities for our students, how the community fits in, how we, how we're able to support and solicit continuous feedback so that we can always make improvements. And we move all the way through until we come to the proposed budget. And it's important because, as you know, school districts are open systems. So we are subjected to every possible push and pull and stress and factor that can exist in the world. We, we deal with everything related to the economy, to, like I said, you know, global pandemics, to potential inflation, you name it, and school districts have to make sure that they can navigate through any potential problems that come. Increasing, decreasing enrollments, increasing needs for students. How can we make sure that we are constantly refining our program to meet the needs of our children, which are always changing? That means we have to be attentive to and very, very nimble in everything that we plan and how we respond to any particular needs. The planning also allows us to make sure that we are being effective and efficient using our resources, that when the time requires it, that we change where our resources are allocated in the organization to support the needs at that time. Needs don't stay static. They change, they grow, they diminish, depending upon where you are in the organization. And being able to make those shifts without necessarily having to increase the overall budget or the capacity of the organization puts, keeps us in a position where, again, we're trying to remain as nimble as we can, even given that we're a larger organization. We also want to make sure that we're in sound fiscal health and that we are stable despite being an open system and despite having to deal with factors that are outside of our control. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to remain as predictable and as solid in terms of our ability to support our programming as possible. And then, we recognize, of course, that all of the decisions that we make today have long-term implications. And we try to make sure that we're, we're thinking five steps ahead and also thinking about potential unintended consequences of any decisions or programmatic shifts or changes that we recommend today. So again, taking us through the strategic plan, all of that is in the underpinning, and you can see our kiddos there. Thanks to the PTA for always sponsoring our walk bike to school events. This is Ann's, one of her favorite slides, so I'm going to let her do that.
Good evening. I always do like to show this slide because it takes us, you know, take a look back in order to really see the perspective as we move forward into future years. 2008, we had the Great Recession and economic downturn with layoffs. And in 2012, the state instituted a tax levy cap. We had state aid reductions, significant millions of dollars taken away from school districts through the gap elimination adjustment. And the state reneged on complying with the court ruling for fulfilling its obligation to fund foundation aid fully so there would be, you know, no disparities between local communities. But fast forward 10 years, '21, '22, our local legislators and the governor fulfilled its commitment and funded foundation aid over the three years, '21, '22 to '23, '24. And we received $16 million in one-time-only federal aid. And I mean one-time-only, which we only used for non-reoccurring expenses. So one-time-only. And then, because of that, we were able to reduce the levy from the maximum allowable for the last three years. So we were able to do that. And that saved our taxpayers significant dollars. But looking forward, you know, as Dr. Ricker said, we do, you know, we constantly are planning, constantly doing forecasting. Right now, for '24, '25, we, you know, we don't see new state aid. We reported out on the fact that the governor is, you know, had proposed reductions for '24, '25 state aid. We're, you know, one-time-only federal funds now will be exhausted. We have our master plan, new program space coming, coming on board. So we have an HVAC at all our buildings will be coming on board. But through our planning, we planned for the increase in utilities and maintenance and so forth. But, so looking forward, you know, will interest rates remain high? Will costs continue to increase? Enrollment down, up, we're not sure. You know, will the state institute gap elimination 2.0? The pandemic, you know, with whatever those illnesses are and war and civil unrest. So I'll stay here. So I also like to show this. This is one aspect of the tax levy cap calculation, which is the allowable growth factor. So the, the law says that we cannot increase the tax levy by more than the lesser of CPI, Consumer Price Index, or 2%. For the 12 months ending December 23, CPI is 4.12%. So therefore, we're limited to the 2%. But our goods, our salaries, benefits, utilities, everything is increasing at a faster pace. So we need to look at reducing expenses and/or being able to look where we can have other revenues to support that gap. So we're, as we said, we are constantly doing fund balance projections. And when we have annual savings, we look to turn those savings back into being able to fund expenses and to support capital projects with our reserves in order to avoid incorporating anything into future budgets. So, in total, over the last seven years, we've turned $160 million into funding these expenses so that it avoids putting it into the budget and, and asking for tax revenues to support that.
And I, yeah, I really do, and, and thank you. And, but most importantly, thanks to the Board of Education, the Finance and Audit Committee for the commitment that we've had, and we will continue to have, to fiscal conservative approaches to budgeting. And any way we possibly can, without being gimmicky, making sure that we're, we're being mindful of what we ask in terms of the tax level. What do I mean by being gimmicky? You know, we recognize that the decisions that we make in terms of tax levy, where we are this year versus where we'll be next year, they're intertwined. So, for instance, a few years ago, when we had no increase, we knew we could do it. We projected out and spoke with the Board of Education, and we, we looked into the future. We knew we could do it. And we continue to reap the benefits of that even now, because once you didn't go up, you, you maintain that, that year's status. Moving forward, we have to, again, constantly assess, as Ann said, and we'll continue to, to make and find efficiencies as best as we can to reduce the overall costs and then limit the, the amount that we need to tax in the future as well. So, we also are committed to continuous improvement, and we want to make sure that we're constantly soliciting and receiving feedback from our children, from our parents and guardians, from our community members, on how things are going, and ways that we can improve our services and improve the experiences that our students are having here in, in the school district. And then thinking about the future and how we can continue to improve upon areas that we've already seen successes. So, ongoing review of all of our curriculum, all, all of our programming is happening all the time. Constant review of academic achievement, student outcomes, down to the individual child. How is your child doing, right? We want to make sure that we are providing that level of service and support to the extent that we're able to, a very unique experience for each individual child, as best as we possibly can. We just, we're talking about extracurricular and athletic participation, how important that is to do everything we can to provide as many opportunities and outlets for all students to be able to participate to the level that, that they'd like to. After-school and summer programming, weekend programming, schools are closed, we're still open. We, we make sure that we're available and we have programming in place, whether it be through the school district itself or relationships with community partners, to offer students the opportunity to, to be here and to be participating in meaningful programming. Staffing and services, again, supporting our staffing members, making sure that we have sustainability. We want to make sure that we can keep the organization moving in the same direction up, right, that, that we want to be going. We don't ever want to be looking at dismantling our services and supports for our students. Where we're putting resources within the organization, as I mentioned, and then thinking about the future. We never, we, we cut these guiding principles each year. We bring them up, we remind our community that these are all of the, the core underpinnings that, that we try to observe when, when thinking about the budget. Protecting the instructional core, what our children experience in our classrooms, evaluating needs versus wants, making sure we're preserving our program and preserving our investments. A great example of that are the facilities. They're beautiful, but they're not beautiful by luck. They're beautiful by investment and attention to detail, and by folks who work on them every single day, treating them like they're their own buildings. And we're very proud of that. And we're going to continue to make sure that maintenance of effort is there. Finding efficiencies where we can, utilizing those savings to offset future, future costs, also making one-time, one-time-only capital expenses where we can, delaying program impact as much as we possibly can when we need to. And then, reduce or restructure rather than cut. Because once you cut, it makes it very, very difficult to reinstitute. So if we have to make shifts in the, in the organization, make changes, that's fine. But we don't want to be cutting programming or opportunities for students. Just a reminder, all of these presentations are available for you under All About the Budget on the website. Okay, numbers. You want me to do it? No, you do. You work so hard on this. I'll, I'll say this.
You can say that.
Can I say this?
Yeah.
1.06%. 1.06%. 1.06%, not a gimmick. 1.06% preserving the program, hitting all of those marks that we just talked about. And then maintaining, again, the commitment to fiscal conservatism and asking about needs versus wants. Now, we know that the future is uncertain. We're trying to predict it as best as we can. We know that, as Ann had mentioned, one-time-only federal stimulus dollars are no longer in play. We know that the foundation aid has been fully funded. We know that we're already seeing political shifts in terms of what was promised versus what's coming, at least right now. And with all of that, we still are, are at 1.06%.
Right. So this is the summary of our, our budget. Appropriations budget is projected at $265.9 million, supported by a tax levy of $203 million at 1.06%. We're using fund balanced reserve dollars to support the increase in retirement pension expenses of $1.6 million. And those monies were reserved specifically to, to support an increase in that expense. State and federal aid, and we'll talk about these in more detail in future slides, $44.8 million. And other revenues, $16.3 million. So the revenues of $265.9 million supporting our appropriations budget. The major sources of revenue, keep going. So, so this just summarizes the main categories. You know, real property taxes, of course, are our major source of revenue of 76%. You know, followed by state and federal aid of almost 17%. Other tax items, the increase from the prior year there or our payment in lieu of taxes, our pilot agreements. There are three new pilot agreements for an increase of $1.9 million. So that is where the Westchester County IDA has made agreements with the City of White Plains that these commercial properties will come off the Plains that these commercial properties will come off the tax rolls, and those dollars that, that used to come through the tax levy will be sent to us directly from the city, from those commercial property owners. Other revenues, interest earnings, we increased that estimate from the prior year by $1.2 million, based on the sustained, you know, interest rates being at a higher level and our work with our investment advisor to maximize our revenue investments. And then 2.4 million transfer in for debt service to offset our principal and interest payments for our capital project debt service payments. Tax levy cap, just to go into further detail, some of the main aspects of this complicated calculation is the fact that the tax base growth factor is a 0% increase. You know, typically, we would receive at least $2.5 million in additional revenues due to properties being added to the tax roll assessments. So this year, due to the pilots and the increase in, in the pilot agreements that we have and those assessments coming off the rolls, there is a 0% increase for the tax-based growth factor. The net amount of the pilots, as I said, was $1.9 million, a decrease in our tax levy for, for those net pilots that are coming off the rolls. And what's also important to note is that our tax levy before exclusions for the coming year is actually $900,000 less than what it was for 23, 24. So 198.7 million versus 199.6 million for 23, 24. So that's a significant decrease. And then when you're able to add back exclusions, net of 4.4 million is what's called the capital exclusion, which is our principal and interest payments on debt service for capital construction, less building aid that's received on, on, on those payments, and then less the debt service reserve fund monies that we're going to use to offset the capital exclusion in order to leave the local share flat. And then this year, there's a small exclusion that we're allowed to add back in for employees' retirement system. If your, your contribution rate for, goes up more than two percentage points, and for employees' retirement system, it went from 13.1% contribution rate of 24, 25 salaries to 15.2%, .1 of that is excludable and can be added back into the tax levy calculation. So the maximum levy, according to law, that we could raise is 205.5 million, or $4.5 million. But because we're using our debt service reserve monies to reduce the levy, the proposed recommended levy is 203.1 million, or 2.1 million increase, 1.06%.
So thinking about, we heard a little bit about it earlier this evening, and thanks very much for the update, but we are, we are looking forward to seeing the One House proposed budget. We've, we've done a lot of meeting with and speaking with our congressional delegation. We are very fortunate to a person of our elected officials here in our region from the legislature. They have been working very, very hard, and frankly, nope, can really wrap their heads around exactly why the governor, in her initial proposal, decided to take a policy position that was going to impact so many throughout the state of New York in such a fashion that really, you know, it could be catastrophic, dependent upon the district. Now, for us, real money, we, we are looking at about a half a million dollars loss in terms of what we had initially projected based on the, the figures that everybody was, was using to assume. But for others, it's millions and, and millions. And, you know, all of this has, leads to the question, is this just another way of, of creating a gap elimination adjustment scenario without calling it that? Credit Jim Rickett for two years ago, being, I would, I would say appropriately skeptical as to whether or not this was going to be coming forward in terms of a fully funding foundation aid without any strings attached. And I find, I think, you know, in some ways, we find ourselves in that position right now. I am very, very hopeful that based on, you know, ongoing conversations with the legislature, hearing from parents and guardians throughout the state of New York on how these cuts will affect and negatively impact their children, and, and also all of our communities, because of downstream effects, and when we talk about, you know, cutting program, that means cutting people, right? And that has an effect all throughout the economy of the state of New York. So what we'd like to be able to do is we'd like to be able to make sure that you're minimizing that type of a negative impact to the extent that you're possible, that that's possible. Yep?
If I might?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was encouraged at the parade by some of our elected officials, call the governor's office.
Right.
Email the governor, call the governor's office, your voters, your voices matter.
Yes.
And NISP, on their website, also has advocacy materials and letters that can be sent, form letters.
Put it.
I just wanted to say that the PCE is also advocating at state level for
Yes.
foundation aid, for full funding and all that, and just all the other things the PCE advocates for, they're also there in full voice.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And, and, and you know, that, that speaks to it, right? It's, it's the collective voice, I think, of, of all, all of these amazing organizations throughout the state who work to support children that are saying, wait a minute, the, the, the impact that this is going to have is, is going to set us back. And by the way, and we're talking about it in a time where we need more supports for mental health and wellness. We need more supports for safety and security in our schools throughout the state. Well, you know, not, not less, so thanks for that.
And those other things the PCE has also advocated for.
Those other things too, right. And Charlie, thank you, Charlie, yes, absolutely, that the calling and, and speaking with and sharing your concerns is, is always important in terms of reaching out to our elected officials.
And providing the runway for the proposed reduction.
Right. And, and again, we talked about that as well. You know, we recognize that there are concerns related to enrollment throughout the state of New York and how foundation aid hasn't been adjusted, or how foundation aid is applied throughout the state, hasn't been adjusted in decades. And, and so, you know, we have school districts that are in, in a position of so-called save harmless or hold harmless, where they're not being reduced in foundation aid, and well, under the, the governor's proposal, all would immediately be reduced, lose that save harmless status. Well, you know, even if you were going to make that change, providing school districts with the appropriate amount of time and forewarning so that they could make informed decisions about how to address that, that particular change in funding, that, that, that would be humane thing.
And one of the, the points that the NISP meeting we had was that the Office of Budget and Management doesn't quite understand how school budgets work as well.
I'm not surprised.
And the timing that's involved.
Yep, right.
And, you know, yeah, if they, you know, eventually pass a budget, you know, at the end of April or whatever, we, we have a certain timeline that we are required to follow, so it doesn't somehow change what we have to present here. And, and they don't get that even when school districts lose students, you know, you lose two students in second grade and five students in fourth grade, it doesn't mean
Doesn't mean you're closing a section and increasing class size.
Right, that you lose that, right. They don't quite get that.
Yeah.
That's been a real issue.
And again, when you reduce education to numbers, I don't care whether it's money or data, whatever, you lose what education is. Education is human beings. Education is individual human beings. Every single one of those data points are an individual, unique human being. And so the idea that you can just apply a number or a formula and meet a specific set of needs, it doesn't work. And they're not widgets, they're children. You know, and, and then the level of support required to make sure that our children are prepared to learn and that they have the best opportunity to be successful in school requires a lot of surrounding supports, right? If you're hungry, you're not going to necessarily do well in algebra, if you're thinking about food. So what do we do? We make sure our children eat, right? You know, and that goes with every, every one of those particular needs that, that kids and all of us really have. So we'll keep working there and we'll keep updating you, but you're right, the timelines don't sync up. If the budget comes back from, from the state of New York and it's late, it's already late, really. We have to build a budget that's, that's assuming that half a million dollars is out. If it comes back, we'll advocate for it to come back, fantastic, but we, we need to move forward because we have legally required timelines that we have to hit. When we talk about the major areas of expenses, we, we really want to point out, we're very proud of this, is that the, the vast majority of our expenses are directly, they're supposed to be with kids, in classrooms, in support services, all, all of, of the, the majority of the expenditures that you're going to see are going to be supporting our instructional program. Looking at enrollment, again, you know, depending upon when, when you look in the school district, you know, the, the initial projections were that we would be down, but we were up last year, off from where, where those projections were going to be. This year, we're probably going to be up again. You know, is that, is that, are we panicking because we're seeing increases in enrollment that we're not able to address? No. But it just goes to show you that even with the best predictions that are predictive, predictors that you could have, you're, you know, you're still going to be impacted by just reality and the day-to-day. So we've seen increases in, in the number of, of our students, and we'll continue to watch that. We do it every year. We take, we take a new demographic report every year, demographic study every year, and we, we continue to, to, to keep that updated as we move forward as well. But even if, you know, when you look at this, if you only looked at the, the graph, you'd say, whoa, that's a precipitous drop. It's, it's really not. I mean, you're talking, you know, a few hundred here, there, and this is over a long timeline, which will change.
You should be on a state math exam, you know, to interpret the graph.
Right.
Right. And, and your note at the bottom, which is as housing units come online, that could tweak this to some extent also.
It could. And that's not included in here, right?
Right, right.
And, and those of you who may be thinking, well, why isn't it included? Well, because they haven't come to fruition yet. And it would be disingenuous to predict, you know, a, a percentage of students, a higher enrollment than has actually been the reality.
With a lot of staff, a higher enrollment if the kids didn't come.
That's right. And when we look at staffing, while we are making some, some changes within the organization, there, there really isn't a tremendous amount of change. We've, we added a number of positions over the last number of years, many focused in areas of helping professionals, as, as all of you know, and we're grateful for those support, we're continuing to support that. But, but overall this year, a net change of .3 in terms, in terms of our staffing. Want to talk a little bit about benefits?
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, just some of the key highlights for what's driving our benefit projections is teachers' retirement system. That contribution rate is increasing by 10% or 2.66% increase. We're using $1.1 million from our reserve funds to support that expense, that increase. Employees' retirement system, increasing to 15.2% from 13.1% of the prior year, or a 16% increase. And again, using $500,000 from the capital reserve, I mean, from the, the retirement contribution reserve to support that. And as I mentioned earlier, a small percentage of that can be added back to the tax levy to support that increased cost. The health insurance statewide, schools cooperative health plan, and we'd like to call it Swiss ship, yes, we are seeing a rate increase of 10%, but overall, the last 18 years, the average increase has been 4.74%. You know, the economy has somewhat caught up with the plan. And overall, this plan saves the district significant dollars as compared to the New York State Health Insurance Plan out there, just about $6 million. Workers' Compensation Insurance Plan, that's a cooperative of school districts, as is the Swiss ship plan, and again, an increase of 5.3%. And just compared to what's out there in the market, again, saving the district significant dollars, you know, at almost $5.6 million. And the plan has been in existence for 37 years and, and does it, they do an excellent job, the leadership of, of, of the workers' comp group. They're made up of business officials. They're, you know, the health insurance plan for Swiss ship, that's superintendents and business officials. So all of this is run by school districts for the benefit of school districts.
Ann, what is loss experience rating?
So the loss experience rating has to do when there are claims that are submitted, if there are accidents and falls and things like that. So they'd use a smoothing average of the, you know, prior five years to come up with what each district's loss experience is, and then they temper that in order to, you know, modify the rate and everyone shares in, in everyone else's loss, so to speak. So that's why, you know, the rate increase was tempered down to 5.3%. And I'll just keep going. So just some other items that you've, you've kind of heard us talk about a little bit. The district has two outstanding serial bonds for capital construction projects and one energy performance lease for construction improvements. The principal and interest payments on that are $9.9 million. And as we talked about, we're going to use debt service reserve funds to reduce the operating fund share of that expense. The district is self-funded for tax sursuary claims, and you saw on the other slide with the savings that we have over the past seven years, you know, a lot of that savings goes towards self-funding this expense. These are refunds that we must pay make to commercial property owners who grieve their assessments. We're estimating this year that we'll have probably $8 million in settlements that we'll have to pay out. Legal counsel has, you know, estimated that our outstanding claims are about $61.5 million that we'll need to have in reserve at year end. And they'll do another analysis to update that for us when we get closer to the end of June.
Ann, could you talk about what a district would have to do to pay these legal claims if we didn't have a reserve?
If we didn't have a reserve, most likely, we would be issuing debt and then incurring, you know, interest expense in order to pay for that debt, and that would be part of our annual budget and would increase our taxes.
And that's not on the exclusion portion of the tax cap or anything, right?
Absolutely not.
So that would cut into
It would definitely take away from our programs and the resources that we have if we had to pay that outright over a period of time. So, you know, it's always advisable, legal counsel always advise that it is important to have a reserve and to be self-funded and continually replenish that reserve and cover your obligations. That is one of the first reserves when we're looking at year-end fund balance, that, you know, you're always going to cover your legal reserves first, and then if there's things left over, then you can fund things like capital projects through the capital project reserve. But that is a legal obligation of the district.
So this isn't like an account where the money is locked up and the district has no access to it if you, if you didn't need it for something? It's reviewed every year?
It's reviewed every year, and we only, you know, we only fund it up to what legal counsel, you know, advises based on, I don't know, it's, I want to say it's like 100 pages of, of claims that we have. It's, it's significant because we're a big district and, and we have a lot of commercial properties within the district. Our other contractual increases, you know, we have HVAC coming on district-wide, but we built into our projections, we knew that we were going to go up about $2 million in our electrical costs, plus we have rate increases. Property insurance, the same thing. It's a consortium of school districts all across the state, and they have shielded us all through the pandemic with high, you know, preventing high increases, but right now, you know, we're looking at 20% increase just because it's, it's finally, you know, impacting school districts.
Also the Child Victims Act.
Right. So the Child's Victim Act and Adult Survivors Act, those claims, environmental losses, you know, hurricanes and such, flooding, all of that, you know, continues to occur out there, and that impacts the, the industry as a whole, but is certainly now impacting school districts. And then our other contractual expenses, BOCs, people transportation, those increases are reflected in the budget, anywhere from 3% to 5%. And then all our staffing salary increases according to those collective bargaining agreements. And then this year, based on fund balance projections, again, to avoid incorporating these things into the annual budget, to look at one-time-only expenses, additional facility projects, funding projects with the athletic department, technology in terms of replacing BenQs and things like that within the classroom, desktop computers, purchasing AED equipment, and then, you know, looking at restructuring program and assessment. So those one-time monies are, are helping us.
Just to go back to the tax sursuary refunds, so the difference between the 7.9 million, for example, and the 61.5, just to make it clear
Sure.
is that there are a bunch of outstanding claims, they're not going to all get settled in, in the current year. So these things take time to wend their way through the course.
Correct, correct.
So that's why you see that kind of difference.
So the 8 million is what will be physically settled and approved by the board based on recommendations from legal counsel. on recommendations from legal counsel that will write a check for. And the 61 and 1/2 million are claims that have been submitted and not.
And that's their estimate, right?
It's it's legal counsel's estimate. It's not what the commercial property owner would like, 100% refund.
Right, right.
We only reserve what legal counsel feels will be the reasonable settlement.
Right.
You know, working closely with the city of White Plains and getting appraisals of property and and working through that to really make sure that we're only setting aside what we legally could be responsible for. You know, and you want you want to make sure that, like, this year is unprecedented with $8 million, but we had a lull through the pandemic.
Right.
And so now the courts have been, you know, are sped up and things are coming through fast and furious with settlements.
And this doesn't, this is the large properties, right? Commercial properties?
It's large commercial properties.
So we all get things in the mail.
Not homeowners.
Right.
This is strictly commercial property owners. Most likely, it's about their equalization rate, and 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 they're saying, look, and I'm paying too much, I'm, you know, my property is vacant, you know, that they're, I'm not making income. Usually, it's based on the income that they're making that they would have make these claim for settlements. So if it's vacant, commercial, like, you know, we have it all over the place, you know, business parks where there could be vacancies, they're going to claim and want to pay less. And then, you know, the other side of that is certainly the pilot agreements, you know, and and that is also reducing the tax rolls, but that is to entice new property owners to come into the city and to have that development.
Want to press pause for a minute, even though we're almost done with the presentation. I want to thank our colleagues for Post Road for being here this evening. And and I also want to say this because I know there are a number of colleagues who have to be smiley and and happy early.
They get credit for two meetings.
Right, but I also wanted to say, you're more than welcome if you need to to leave. Please, I'm not throwing you out, but you're more than welcome to leave. I know you have to be. Thank you as well for coming. Oh, absolutely.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, I was, yep, absolutely, because you can't leave, you have to stay. Good night, everybody. So, you know, and again, not reading these to you, but and and also, all of these enhancements, we go much deeper. Dr. Hand and and the team went very, very deep into, in terms of our instructional budget presentation, all the all of the programming that's available for our children, we're very, very proud of it. And and we continue to be proud as we make enhancements and we make changes into into the services and supports that our students receive. So we go all the way through pre-K, all the way up into high school. We talk about extracurricular athletic opportunities, we talk about the arts, supporting everything in every way that we possibly can, dual language, K6 literacy, making sure that we're taking an approach to to literacy, learning how to read in a way that's going to be individualized and support all learners. You've heard a lot about the the so-called science of reading, the body of research related to literacy. Well, Dr. Hand and and our team, along with parents and guardians, have been supporting a diverse literacy program through in the school district for years where students have access to phonics, they have access to to whole language, they have access to all of these different opportunities, workshop, whatever, you name it, they have different opportunities to explore literacy acquisition and and growth, and as well as based on their unique needs with additional supports and services. And that goes all the way up into high school. Again, our dual language program, continuing to support that. English as a new language, reviewing, renewing licenses, rather, for for our math and visions program. We have NWEA that we've instituted this year in terms of real-time predictive assessments that are giving are giving us data that are helpful, not only in in adjusting instruction at the time in the classroom, but also in predictive modeling for where students could use additional support now and in the future in order to achieve optimal academic outcomes with regard to mathematics and English language arts. Also STEM, we, again, supporting the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, learning opportunities throughout the district, partnerships, and we we have some amazing partnerships, whether it's partnerships related to STEM or whether it's partnerships related to our educator pathway program and everything in between. Science and engineering, again, continue to expand the professional learning for the implementation of the standards, new instructional materials that are needed to support the implementation of of the standards, and science investigations, three through five, TRIPS. We have social studies, again, textbook adoptions that are coming online, as well as new courses. A lot to really be excited about as as we look to the future here in our academic program as well. Wellness, physical education, making sure that our children are both, you know, learning how to live and lead a healthy and well lifestyle. Again, healthy minds, healthy bodies go together hand in hand. Getting ready for college, supporting the Avid program, instructional technology, we just heard, you know, and and again, congratulations to Mr. Verulo for winning one of the TEL Awards this year. But all different types of opportunities for our students to engage in real-life learning, both here and outside of the school district. We have a computer science pathway, we have people support services that we continue to support and make sure that we're providing that, again, targeted and unique support for every individual child. You might say to yourself, Joe, every single child? Yeah, every single child. There are some, there are some approaches that we can take, and and they're going to, they're going to meet the needs of many children at once, but there are many, many situations where we are getting down to the individual child, individual family, and doing what we can to support them as well. New courses coming next year as well that we're excited about, everything from early college experience, civics and economics for English as a new language students, Accelerator EDU, which is a natural component to one of the courses that we all really love to see the inventions for Incubator EDU, and and we're really excited to see Accelerator EDU come online as well. For athletics, we have an additional local live installation, new modified girls basketball team, fall and winter assistant cheer coach. These programs are expanding. We have more students participating every single year, and we want to encourage that increased participation, and so we're making sure that we have the appropriate staff in place to support. Facilities and operations, again, all over the school district, there's always improvements taking place. And thanks very much, Javier, for for all of that work that's taking place with our team as well. Safety and security, constantly trying to make sure that we're putting in place in accordance with our, again, long-range facilities plan and our our really huge security audit that took place a number of years ago. We're continuing to institute each year components of that plan, so supporting the blue light project, which is blue lights outside of all facilities so that if there is an emergency taking place, first responders know when those lights are on that that this is the spot, this is where we should be. We also have Zero Eyes, again, throughout the school district, utilizing and harnessing the power of technology to create a safer environment for all students, staff members, and community members, whether you're inside a facility or you're outside a facility. If our cameras can see, we're safer, and 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 we're really happy to have that program in place as well. Food and nutrition program, again, supporting food at no additional cost for all of our children, breakfast and lunch, as well as a healthy from-scratch cooking that's also taking into consideration dietary restrictions and dietary needs. This is a a really special opportunity for our students, and we're really proud of it here in White Plains. We're an in-house food and nutrition staff, and under the leadership that Ms. McGinn and and the team has provided, we have nutritionists, we have cooks, we have everybody who's devoted to providing really good, really healthy food, but let me say it again, really good. So we ask our students for feedback, and Dawn puts that puts that into play and puts in and put makes the meals that the kids want to eat. Health services, again, supporting our health services program, purchasing department information technology, and transportation. And one of the things that we hope to see come to fruition very, very soon in partnership with the city of White Plains and National Express are the installation retrofitting of stop-arm cameras on all of the the buses that operate within the school district.
Last line.
Right, sorry, most important. Funded through reallocation of resources, no new money, right? So this is all taking place based on the the resources that we have available within the general operating budget. We're not increasing any costs associated with that. How does the money spend? And we need to break it out into the three-part budget for you to take a look at. In our preliminary budget, you can see the administrative component is under 8%, almost 77% related to program and 16.1% related to capital improvement. This breaks out a little bit further where you could see, well, what's included in administration, program, and capital? Really, administration is a huge bucket. Everything's in there that's not in the classroom. So the total operation of the organization that's not associated with the program, and then, of course, capital is everything related to all of our facilities and and the associated benefits therein. We don't like to talk about it, and we are really, really grateful for all the support we receive from the community of White Plains over over the years for our children. But the question is always out there, well, what happens if a budget wasn't successful? If a budget wasn't successful in the first in the first vote, the Board of Education, all boards of education have the opportunity to come back and to either change the the budget in a fashion that they believe would be appropriate and supported by voters, or not change it and put it back out there again. So everybody in all school districts get a second vote. If the budget is unsuccessful a second time, you move into what's called a contingency budget, which is really, really detrimental to the the long-term health of the school district because it makes zero increase permitted, which means the school district, any school district, would then have to operate with the monies that you have and all those costs that that we just talked about that are out of your control increasing. Non-contingent expenses have to be removed, so nothing can be part of the budget that isn't absolutely necessary. There's a cap, and and for us, it would mean about a $2.1 million reduction in in the overall budget. We are also going to have a second question as we do. This has no impact to the taxpayer, but it is really important to the long-term fiscal health and stability in the school district. And this is the proposition to create another capital reserve. Question might be out there, Joe, we already have capital reserve, that's absolutely true, and we have to create new ones every year to make sure, or every couple of years, depending, to make sure that we always have one that's in play, because when one of them is exhausted, we then need to create a new one. And again, capital reserves are a really responsible way to save, potentially save taxpayer dollars because you you're moving those monies that you have available into the capital reserve, they need to be used to support the capital side of the budget. They also need to be approved. You see, you're approving the capital reserve, then you need to, the voters need to also approve the use of the capital reserve monies as well. So it is, it is a a really strong way to make sure that we have the resources available in the future and also not to increase costs on the taxpayer as well.
So is the creation of a savings account, it doesn't cost the taxpayers any way, any any amount?
That's right.
And it is a prudent use of of funding.
Savings of, the creation of a savings account, supported by the taxpayers, that doesn't cost the taxpayer any additional monies, and that can then be used to support additional costs in the future, again, so that no additional taxes need be raised.
So then every year, the Board of Education, with the recommendation of the administration, could make a determination whether to deposit money into that account or to not deposit money into the account.
That's right.
Depending on what the district needs are.
Absolutely right.
And when we, when it's recommended how to use that money, then the voters actually get to vote on it as well.
That's right, yep.
So we can spend that money until the voters allow the district to spend that money.
Right, right.
And if you had a capital project and you didn't have a capital fund like this, what would the alternative be?
Same, almost similar to to when you had to deal with that debt of the tax sursuary, you would have to go out for for a bond. And then tax for it. And then again, so these steps, and thanks for bringing that up, Jim, because these steps are are steps that we try to proactively take, you know, again, just trying to think about the future and trying to be really fiscally conservative in terms of any potential cost increases to the taxpayer.
And then giving the voter the lever to pull.
The voter has a say, absolutely. And and again, you bring up the point, even in the expenditure of those monies to take them out of the capital reserve, the voter has a say on that as well. Yep, no, thank you. You did it. So we we just completed the the introduction of the preliminary budget to the Board of Education, our Board of Education work, I'm sorry, the adoption is on the 8th. Typically, we we don't need a workshop, we keep it in the in the calendar just in case, but we are looking forward to the adoption on the 8th. Any questions, of course, and and I thank the, thank the board because you've already asked, you know, tons and tons of questions, not this, you know, all throughout this process. But if you have any additional, happy to answer.
They have lots of homework with that binder.
Lots of homework, huge binder.
Do we ever save money on OT, let's say if it doesn't snow, or heat, a warmer winter?
We can, yeah.
It's probably pennies on the dollar, but do we save?
We can.
If we have a warmer winter?
Definitely, and oil, and oil costs, yep, we can depend upon. Overtime, if if you don't have snow, yep, that that can absolutely be the case. I I'll say definitely where I've seen it over the years is when you have an unseasonably warm winter in the fuel side, you see really big savings, yeah. Yeah, you sure can.
Any helps there?
Absolutely, absolutely. So again, available for for any questions, and then I want to thank everybody at home who watched this evening, and and feel free to reach out if there are any questions as well. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So just to to let you know, Mr. Norris had a little bit of a emergency, so he stepped away, and he's going to attend to that.
But Joe, I know we've been here a little bit tonight, but I just wanted to say, I sent you and Ann an article this morning that was in Lo Ha about a district in Westchester County that is struggling financially right now in a big way, and they had a school finance expert come into their board last week and basically just tell them how they got into the position they were in, what they needed to do to get out of the position they were in, and it involved cutting kindergarten, it involved cutting staff, it involved cutting programs, and it's a pretty dire outlook for that district. And I think that as board members, that's our nightmare, really, truly. I mean, we love our programs, we love our staff, but I, the budget is so important and critical to the operation. And also, it's just thoughtful, like, the thoughtful, common sense planning of the budget, I just cannot say thank you enough to the thoughtfulness of it and just how you roll it out to the community, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, that's right. To what you said, Kane, as well, I think we're dealing with a moving target many times. Look at what the state did this year as far as changing the formula. So that's a $430,000, and negative impact to the district. If you look at pilots and the, yeah, that, that's now that's $1.3 million when you add that to the formula change. And you, we do the long-term, the long-range planning, but that's not necessarily something that you could look into when you list your range of variables that can happen in your in your planning process every year. So I think it's a, it's a large part of what we do and trying to be, well, we know school's going to open in September every year, right? And and the kids are going to be there. So we want to make sure that we've got the necessary resources for all of our students to to get that education that they deserve, and that this is part of that plan. I like the part that you said how we are part of, we're at the table for benefits. We work in cooperatives, and the cooperatives are very important. What they do is they take the profit out, but we basically get the same services that we would get without, you know, by by working through the cooperative. So I think we're very lucky to to be able to do that. Our strategic use of reserves has been very important. I think when you look at 1.06% for a year-to-year tax change, I think that's something that is very responsible, especially when you compare that to our rate of inflation. And it's it's almost, I mean, it's very, it's very good. It's not not just responsible, I think it's a very good number. And, you know, I think we have to continue to work towards building programs that are attractive to all of all of our students. And I know we worked really hard to do that, I think we have to continue to do that. I think, you know, we're a city school district, so we have students that come in and that come out of our district. And I think we have people who come here for, that come in for a reason and that leave for a reason. I think we want to be mindful of that, and not that we want to build program for any one particular reason, but we want to look to try to take care of all of our students, and I think that's important, and it also would give us an indication of where we where we know we're really doing well and where we may have an opportunity to do different things a little bit better, because we're doing everything really well. But it's, again, it's just doing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we appreciate. Thank you so much. Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. I just, I just also, just, I'm just going to be briefly, I know the time is getting very late, I just want to briefly say, not just to echo everything that's said, and maybe you you would have said as well, but this this work goes on, and I feel maybe you would have said as well, but this, this work goes on, and I feel like the month after school opens, it starts, and I do want to mention the finance, the finance audit committee, and we did say that we have a member that, you know, also contributed, you know, thoughts and, and, you know, advice, you know, to what we do and how we spend our money, so I just want to acknowledge him and say thank you for that, but it's, it's not easy work, so I just, I want to be brief, so.
Let me just add also very briefly that we really do appreciate, we say this all the time, the community's support as well of our budgets, which really, you know, it's the mindset of the community that allows us to do the work that we do and not be in positions like Kane is describing in other, in other school districts.
Yeah, so thank you.
I just want to stress that, you know, as we're looking at these other districts who are struggling, and as we're looking at all of the budget factors that we really have no control over, I really urge everyone to take a look at that budget online and review those last couple of pages, and I feel like we can't help but be proud of the fact that we are expanding our programs and our supports. Take a look at all of the expansions, all of the brand-new projects, all of the projects that we've had that we are pushing forward. We're talking about programs that most schools wouldn't even, school districts wouldn't even dream of, you know, we're talking about extracurriculars and sports and music, these are things most, most districts wouldn't even be able to consider right now, because they cannot afford their educational part of the budget. So again, I just need to remind everybody, please take a look at those, and I hope we all realize, you know, how lucky we are, and it's not just luck, it's due to a lot of hard work, and we should be very proud.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, thank you for the comments, and thank you again. Next, we're going to move to our summary action item portion of our agenda. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Item B, we'd like to thank all of our very generous donors this, this month, a $200 donation to the Merrick Avenue School Kindergarten Garden Project from the White Plains Beautification Committee, and they are just extraordinary. You already see the flowers that are beginning to pop up throughout the city courtesy of the beautification committee, and they had a great float at the parade, as they always do. $3,000 from the Friends of White Plains to cover two grants as follows, $1,500 to help fund a trip for all fourth graders at Post-Road Debalus Adventures, and $1,500 to fund a $3,000 grant to Post-Road for a school-wide animal adventures assembly as a culminating experience for the One Book One School program. $1,500 is to be sourced from unspent funds from two previous grants, 500 from parent university in '22, '23, and 1,000 from the cancelled WPHS Calculus Girls Lunch from '23, '24. So thanks so much to the White Plains Public Schools, the Friends of White Plains Public Schools as well.
Yeah, our very best friends. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we move on to individual action items, I just want to bring your attention to this lovely pamphlet that was created for our district to really just highlight our district. Our, our previous clerk of the board, Ms. Michelle Schoenfeld, wrote this, and the photography was by Jill Singer, except I took this picture. So this is also, this is also available online, take a look at it.
With your face.
Take a look at it online, and this is a really thing to, you know, have, that we can really tout what we do and how well we do it. I like to think of us as a premier district, and this puts us just even closer to being ultra premier, so thank you, Michelle Schoenfeld. If you want to, if you want to look at it online, that's fine, or you can contact her if you want a hard copy. Next, we'll go on to individual action items. We have individual action item A, the recommended action is the authorization to establish a capital reserve fund. The White Plains, the Board of Education authorizes the district to, to set out a position, a proposition at election to be put before the voters at the annual meeting on the 21st of May that seeks to gain approval for the establishment of a new capital reserve fund. So we've talked a lot about that.
No cost to the voters.
At no cost to the voters. May I have a motion? Are there any other questions, eloquent presentation and information about the capital reserve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have individual action item B. It's the stipulation agreement, the Board of Education authorizes the Board President and Superintendent of Schools to educate a stipulation agreement in connection with an impartial hearing, and this stipulation has previously been shared and reviewed with members of the board. May I have a motion?
So move. Second.
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 Okay, all in favor, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have item C, the employment agreement with the Assistant Superintendent of Business. As the Board of Education hereby approves and authorizes the Board President to execute the agreement, a copy of which has previously been reviewed by board members. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You said it, I was like, what? Okay. Next, we have item D, an administrative appointment, the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Sarah Tucker, who is replacing Jennifer Hammond.
Waited so long, but Tucker's still here.
Jennifer Hammond King, probationary period April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2028. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, congratulations, Ms. Tucker, and officially, and thank you very much for being here, Ms. Tucker, and her husband are here with us this evening. Came, came through a, a very, very rigorous and competitive search process, headed up, thanks very much, Mr. Pepper, Dr. Hand, the search committee, a lot of folks involved, and especially thank you, Ms. Tucker, and we're really looking forward to welcoming you to the team. We know you're going to have a great deal, a great deal to bring and to support and to offer our children, and if you'd like to say a few words, you stuck around.
You have to step around, you have to step over there.
You gotta go to the microphone.
Certain mistakes I don't make twice, right? Or three times, John.
Just thank you so much for having me, and I'm thrilled to be in this district. Watching the budget, I think it's kind of to my advantage to see just the robust programming you have here and the efforts you make to provide a wonderful instructional program to your kids, and to think about big numbers and small numbers, and making sure each kid is having a really wonderful experience, so, very excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and hopefully Mr. Tucker doesn't have to spend too many board meetings. Congratulations to you too, sir.
Congratulations, welcome, yes. Next, we'll move to board discussion, item 10. We met, the HR committee met, and we don't discuss it.
No, I can't.
Yeah, but we do meet as a board. I was able last month to get into the Youth Bureau meeting, you know, where the Youth Bureau is such a great partner of our schools, and I do appreciate being able to make the meetings. We have a standing conflict on Thursdays, so I don't always get to go, but I did get to go and just sneak in there and give them an update, and just wonderful things that they're doing. The other thing we didn't mention, Dr. Rick, is that we did attend an informational center by the African-American Men of Westchester on the Business Skills Olympics for our students to enter, and, you know, was just really a prep and everything you need to do to be part of this, and it's really exciting that our students will be, you know, will be participating, and Rocco, Rocco was there and very enthusiastic, so, you know, we're hopeful, and I have to tell you, when I was introduced, I did say I am from the premier White Plains City School District.
Yes, you did.
Because I really, I really believe that we are premier, and we want our students to also be premier as well as our staff, because we do have the resources as outlined in our budget that we spend wisely, because we get one chance to make it right for everyone, and, you know, it has to be premier, so.
Can I just offer, because it was such a great event, and really, huge thanks to the African-American Men of Westchester for supporting this program, as well as Merrill Lynch.
Yes, yes.
For sort of supporting.
Or Morgan Stanley.
Morgan Stanley, I'm sorry.
Morgan Stanley, yeah.
It's really, it's going to be a great opportunity for all students who participate from various high schools throughout the region. They are using case studies from Harvard Business School, and they will work as a team to explore, really, to explore novel problems and applications to solving them. This year's topic is going to be artificial intelligence, and so the case studies that they're going to be choosing from, very timely, very relevant, and certainly our students, I think, will be able to figure it out a lot faster than many of us.
Curriculum instruction, not meet, but we're meeting next month. Finance and audit met to review the budget. I could dig a little deeper if we have some time.
Few more details?
Sure, do it line by line.
And I'll just report out on the special education subcommittee, so I had the opportunity to be on a field trip to Westchester Community College to observe the, Westchester Community College, I'm going to say this right, Extension Program for SELL students. These are students who are generally going to be with us for seven to eight years through special education, and it's an opportunity for enrichment to offer them a post-secondary experience in their last couple of years with us in partnership with the Professional Development Center at Westchester Community College. The program is related to employment, computer skills, communication and social skills, navigating a campus, and I and the board, we always appreciate that opportunity, really, to see our programs in action, and that, I want to say, we really try to, this is reflected in our entire budget, that we really try to think outside the box and create programs for students that we think are really going to meet their needs and extend their educational experience, and as I said, you can see that throughout the budget, so, very much appreciated.
Thank you, thanks for going to that too, Cheryl.
Yes. So thank you, everyone, for staying, I know it was a long meeting, but we do appreciate, we appreciate you all staying. Welcome, Ms. Tucker, and thank you, John Shepherd and John Misavich. We really, we appreciate what you do and the effort you put through to do it perfectly. Thank you. May I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, safe travels.